Board members, this action item is being brought to your attention to ask for you to-
I don't think we're all about here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, Member Collins stepped out to the restroom. Would you like to- should we- would you like to wait?
Um, yeah, I'd like to wait.
I think we can wait.
I'm sorry.
If you don't mind.
Yeah, it's fine. You want- yeah. So we take a- you want to call a two-minute recess?
Yeah, let's take a two minutes.
Okay, great.
All right. All right. Shall we- back in session?
Item 8.2.
Yes, that's correct.
Board members, this is coming to your attention to ask for your consideration and approval.
I think it's just- sorry, it's 8.4.
Oh, I'm so sorry. 8.4, I'm sorry. Coming to you for your consideration of your approval and a request to consider a change to the salary and benefit proposal for the Director of Maintenance position, to move this position from Classified Range 4 to Classified Range- excuse me, Classified Range 5, Step 4. Mr. Ronvos is currently the Director of Facilities and he is in a very critical position with us, as you may know, as the Director of Facilities for our new complex. And so I'm bringing this to you to ask for your approval.
Could you describe to us?
Do we have any questions or comments?
Yeah, I'd like to know the justification for changing the salary range for this position, not the person, but for the position itself. Have the duties changed? Has the market for this position changed when you look at hiring this in a couple of years or have any of those changes?
Yes, the duties have changed quite a bit. Mr. Vos has had to, because of the new facility, we've had to add to his duties. He's had to take on being the evening and, well, 24-hour security response person. He gets calls now at 2:00 in the morning, 4:00 in the morning. Unfortunately, they're trickling off, but it's still fairly regular. If a- if a- some of the alarms are so sensitive and were- there's- he's still working on trying to tweak those, but for instance, sometimes if there's a- it could be a bird that runs into the window at the main lobby with the large windows, that sets off the alarm. He gets an immediate call from Chicago and he has to make a decision whether or not to have the police come out or not. So that alone has added quite a bit to his duties and getting up in the middle of the night. He also- we have reduced the number of custodians that we have to- what we're currently staffing with 3.5 instead of four, so he has picked up some of those duties. He is now, on Wednesdays, doing the windows of the doors and here to wipe them down, which was not part of his duties before as Director. He is also- I can't think of what the other one is. There's another aspect besides the windows that he has had to pick up as part of his duty. So to answer your question, we've increased the amount of work his position- well, actually, being in his facility has really necessitated a large increase in his responsibilities and work.
Okay, but he's supervising fewer people now?
Well, 3.5 instead of four, and we've added to his workload.
And in theory, having one facility was supposed to reduce maintenance and that type of stuff. Has that not happened?
Well, there is a savings. We realize the savings- I don't know what- Doris, she's not in the room. A savings on a half of a custodian salary for the year is probably, I'm going to suspect, let me just think about the math for a second, that's probably four or five times greater the amount of money than you're- than we're- I'm asking you to- we're asking you to change the salary.
For not him, but the position?
For the position, but it's for Mr.- which Mr. Vos currently occupies, yes.
Dr. Rubio, do we have- I'm sorry, Member Bush- Inch, I can ask you about, since we now have three facilities under our jurisdiction, correct, so his responsibilities actually have carried over to the other two for oversight as far as maintenance of Annie Yates' existing site and Ralph Hawley?
To some extent, that's true. If anything happens at Annie Yates, and we did have some vandalism about a month back that Mr. Vos is still dealing with as the position of Director, yes. As issues crop up, smaller issues, but sometimes at the previous facility, yes, he's still responsible for those as well.
Okay, so he basically- we've increased the responsibility 50%, correct, regarding the number of facilities?
In terms of facilities and space, yes.
All right, thank you.
But shouldn't our women lease out a facility? Do they not maintain the facilities?
They do maintain a facility, but as owners of the facility, if something serious happens, the issue at Annie Yates was some pretty severe floor damage, which would be a safety risk. So normal custodial things, yes, both the YMCA and the current tenants handle that.
Any further comments, questions? Any public comment?
So if I could maybe help summarize, so regardless of the savings, we're talking about somebody that- a person that has had an increase in responsibilities and it's also merit-based, and that's why we're looking to do this?
I'm sorry, could you say it one more time?
Sure. So again, regardless of the savings, this is- this adjustment is related to an increase in responsibilities and also merit-based as well. Is that what I'm hearing?
Primarily increase in his responsibilities. Mr. Vos, if you're asking about his performance, it's hard for me to usually comment in public, but I will- I have no hesitation to tell you he's a extremely hard-working person in that position.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
But I'd like to point out that we're talking about the position-
That's correct.
Not a person.
That's correct.
So if this person were to move on, would we still be obliged to list this position at this rate, or would we have an opportunity to change things a little bit?
We typically, if we're moving down one row or one- yeah, one row, we would normally, let's say, down the road, if Mr. Vos is no longer with us or the position is empty, we would normally stay at that range. However, it doesn't preclude us or the board or me to bringing it to you to say, you know, right now financially, we need to reconsider what the salary range is. I believe we can, and I don't know if I'm misspeaking, but I believe the board still has the ability to change that. But normally, when we evaluate a position for a change like this, we typically leave it in place.
And you make comparables of this type of work?
Always. We're always looking at other districts to try to stay competitive. That's correct.
Thank you.
Any further comments? If not, do I have a motion?
I see a motion.
Second, anyone?
Yeah, second.
All right. Roll call, please.
Member Solas?
Yes.
Member Ball?
Yes.
Member Collins? Member Inch?
Yes.
Member Langner?
Yes.
Member Vargas?
Yes.
President Miriam?
Yes. Motion carries unanimously, 7-0. All right. Next item is 8.5 Enrollment Report. Dr. Rubio?
Yes, you have in front of you a chart from an Excel printout. Member Inch had requested some data regarding grade level and city, and I only unfortunately right now have the current year's data, but I wanted to do my best to get this here based on the request. And so if you look at the chart for each grade level, it shows you the percentage of students who are currently residing in Emeryville, who are listed- where Emeryville is listed as their city of residence by grade level. And you can see that it fluctuates quite a bit from grade level to grade level, depending on how those numbers come in year to year.
Thank you. Would you be providing a soft copy of this as well?
Oh, you can have a- yeah, would you like an electronic copy? Sure.
Yes, please, thank you.
Lisa, will you help me with that?
Yeah, absolutely. You can have- we'll make sure you get that first thing in the morning. Everybody would like a soft copy, sure.
And I don't know if you have any questions about that, but it's really an informational item.
So I brought this up so we could have a further discussion about increasing enrollment in Emory, because it seems to me that there are obviously more children than listed here that live in Emeryville, probably a significant amount, that we could entice- there's almost so many children from how many- how far away that we can get to come here that don't live here in Emeryville. And I was wondering if you had any thoughts about how many children in Emeryville that you think we're missing here?
I do not. I do know- it's a good question. I do know we, you know, we compete like all public schools compete and are struggling with that competition, and so with different charter schools, different- pretty expensive private schools, and so I don't know how many. I did some looking last year and we found only really, I'm trying to recall the numbers, it was less than a handful of students, two to four students, depending on one or two of the schools we checked. And we recently checked, Ms. Tamari actually checked the other day with one of the Catholic schools that we believe is closing by the Archdiocese, because we are curious, because we are outreach into those schools and we're trying to connect with those families to see if they're interested in coming. I'm sorry that they're having those issues, but we wanted to make contact with those schools. And Ms. Tamari learned, I think there was one student from Emeryville in that particular school. So I don't know how many. It would take quite a bit of resources and time to find out, and we'd have to contact all the different schools in the area, Spire, Berkeley, Maynard. I believe Berkeley is actually closing a charter school, which I believe is Realm, so that's- I believe that is closing for next year. I don't know if that's official yet, but that's what I've heard. But I don't know hard numbers, to be honest with you.
But I mean, if you looked at just the population of Emeryville and the school, age children, there is- there are numbers that we could look at for the population of Emeryville, at least last year.
And then I can get to that in a second. If I may ask a question, do we happen to have a total? Sorry if I missed it on the sheet.
Oh, it's not on here. I believe it's about 687, is my belief.
No, total Emeryville, sorry?
This is- these are our students. These are by grade level.
The 687 are all Emeryville residents?
No. So I thought you meant the total number of students for the school. So total number of students TK to 12th grade is about 687, and this is a breakdown by grade level showing- so I'll give you an example. If you look at first grade, you'll see 44 students who are Emeryville residents out of 71, giving us a 62- a percentage of 62% of the first grade students are currently Emeryville residents. So out of- I'm sorry?
I'm sorry. You can easily take the spreadsheet and add the total.
Do you happen to have a total handy by Emeryville?
If he had the soft copy, he could get his total.
I could, I don't- I-
He could easily add it up.
Oh, he could add it up. Is that what you were trying to say?
Yeah, he had the soft copy, you could very easily add the number there.
Yeah, sure. That's correct, and we are sending you a soft copy.
My question was if you happen to have that soft copy handed, if we could- handy, if we could see the total.
I could-
And the reason why I see this, only if you have it handy. I'm looking at census information and there in 2010, there were 607 humans in- living in Emeryville between the ages of five to 17 years.
I'm sorry, how many were there?
607, and that's compared to 526 to the census in 2000. So let's assume that- so right now, assuming the same rate of growth, we're probably looking at around 640 to 650 Emeryville residents between the ages of five and 17, roughly.
I think the Census Department has up-to-date, they have interim reports, so if you want to use those numbers for not probably accurate, but you know, estimate, that's a resource to use.
Yeah, it would throw you off a little bit because it goes from 17 to like, I mean, you don't have a one-to-one comparison with the grade levels.
Correct, yeah. It could be toddlers, zero to, I guess, zero to three. Also, five is age five?
Five to 17, and then you have 18-year-old seniors and 19-year-old people that live in Emeryville that might- wouldn't necessarily be going to school.
I'll add, and I don't know- I don't know if this helps us with enrollment, but I will let you know that, you know, we do, as we shared tonight, we're doing everything we can to communicate, market, add- continue to add strong programming, find the best teachers. These are the things that, you know, the programming and the quality of our staff that we think makes the difference for our students. So my belief is that the more we do that, the more we continue to do that, the better chance we have to increase the residents from Emeryville. I think I shared with the board the last meeting, I believe- maybe it was the cabinet, I apologize if it wasn't shared with the board, because we're just looking at the numbers now. We've had about 50 families already contact us regarding next year. We had an employee from Pixar, a parent who lives in West Contra Costa, contact us as well about wanting to come as a parent. So we're seeing some good numbers come in so far earlier than we typically see. So whatever we can do to increase the numbers, we certainly are doing.
So when you generated this, you told me you were having some data issues.
Yes.
I don't want to go into it, but would you reassure the board that those problems will be fixed?
Can you repeat your comment, please?
You told me that you were having some data issues when you generated this report.
That's correct.
Reassure us or tell us when those will be solved at a deeper level?
Sure. My belief based on- we looked at them again in the last couple of days. We had an error, we noticed regarding some students when they registered, they- the families listed a different address to receive their mail, and so- which is an option that a person when they register can do that. And there was a data error when the import came in, and so I suspect we can- it's not many students, as I recall, it's about 15 students, maybe 20 at the most. So I suspect we'll have those fixed by next week.
And then any duplicate data entries you-
We- yeah, we're actually talking to Illuminate. We have a ticket in now to try to understand why it is that the duplicates are coming out in the report, because that was another issue. So we don't know the answer yet, but I- it's- when we look at the data, the raw data, it looks correct. So something about the report and the way it was run, or the report design, accidentally produced duplicates without zip code and address with the same names of the students. And so we were able to delete those pretty simply, but we don't understand why that happened. So again, we're, you know, we're five months into the system, but we do have a ticket into the company to try to determine what caused that.
So do you have a valid mailing address for each and every student encoded zip code?
Yes. Oh, yeah.
Because your correspondence made it sound like there was entries, duplicate entries with zip codes that were missing.
Well, there are. So the original, I don't know if you want to get into the date or not, but-
No, I just want to be reassured that we have all of that information, no duplicate entries, and that we have a good system that's working.
Oh, we have a good system that's working. We're going to have glitches as we're learning the system, as we're learning how to run the reports, and we're going to run into things as does the company at times. But the- I think you can be assured as board members that we have a valid mailing address for every student, and that we'll figure out what the problems are with the company if we need to, and we'll have those corrected.
Okay, and you'll be able to generate reports more easily than this?
I hope so, yeah, yeah.
Okay, that's awesome. Thank you.
Dr. Rubio, I have a question.
Sure.
So I did receive your lovely little postcard in the mail today.
Oh, you did? Oh, good.
Yes, for your outreach. But my question is, are we doing any additional outreach to parents whom have students that live in Emeryville but are not attending Emory Unified School District schools?
Well, there are- you know, we don't have a hard mailing list of the students, let's say of the census, for example. So if the census, but a recent census, if it is about, I think Member Vargas was estimating about 640 to 650 students between 5 and 17, we don't have any lists or names or data on who those kids are or where they live. But this goes out to every resident in Emeryville based on the mailing list of the company we're working with, as well as a- just behind our community here. So Ms. Collins, to answer your question, I- we're- in terms of mass marketing and communication, what we're trying to do is to blanket the residences to try to make sure we're reaching all the families. But also to answer your question, we don't have any specific lists of families who live in Emeryville who are residents and who have children who aren't with us.
So is there a possibility that we can take a look at the outer district transfers?
Well, I'm not sure what you're saying.
So in order for the students to attend another school district, don't they have to come to you to get an outer district transfer?
They do, but I'm-
Okay, can we use that as data to see who is not attending schools and maybe do some kind of outreach based on the transfers that you sign off on to attend other districts?
Well, that- Ms. Tamari's just reminding me that it pertains only to public schools, and that's- those are students coming in to us who don't live in Emeryville. I think the question-
Not coming to, that's going out.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're asking about the ones going out.
Right, the outer district transfers, not the inner district.
We can. For those, we can. We can check. Now, we have the copies of the report, of the request, so it's not- technically, it's not impossible for us to go into the, I don't know how many, I don't think, I don't know if there are many. They're not many. So if you- we have 10 or 10 to 20, whatever the number- Ms. Tamari believes is 10, whatever the number is, we could contact those families and see if we can get them to come back. Now, if they live in Emeryville, they're also going to receive this, we believe. But other than that, there's not, again, a way for us to- let's say there's 50 students in Emeryville between 5 and 17 attending Spire, Berkeley, Maynard, the Japanese Montessori, and the new Montessori school, the kindergarten, I forget the name of it. We don't have any specific data or access to those names or data regarding those families. But we're doing everything we can.
So when you set this out last time, were you able to track the success rate of this? When people contacted you, were you able to determine how successful this particular flyer was? Did you pay to have this designed?
I designed it myself, to be honest with you. And so- but no, because, you know, again, we have eight people running the school district. We weren't- we do track that kind of data when we send marketing emails, which we do now. But we did not ask, and we could, but we did not design the registration process to ask the additional question, "How did you hear about us?" It could be done, but we did not answer your question.
So this is supposed to be a call to action to enroll?
Yes.
Yeah, that's not clear from this flyer.
I get your opinion. I probably would disagree with you.
Did you have a lot of increase in enrollment?
We had our best enrollment in sixth grade and ninth grade last year than I've ever seen on any charts.
But an overall increase?
Overall, we're about the same because of the wash-in and wash-out of students, no. But in sixth grade and ninth grade, which are key marker grades, particularly for secondary, it was off the charts. So I'm still happy about that.
Good for you.
You know, I'm going to stop for a second.
This represents the school.
Hold on a second, hold on a second. I'm going to ask, look, it's important to me that we work as a team, so if you're going to make a comment like "good for you" at the end of a comment to me, I'm going to ask either the board president to say something to you, or I'm going to say something to you, because I am not going to sit here as superintendent and be anyone's punching bag or let people be unprofessional towards me. So that's- I'm going to leave it at that.
I found this a little unprofessional personally.
I'm sorry?
I found this a little unprofessional. This represents a school, and you designed this yourself, and I don't think that this was something that would ever entice somebody that lived in Emeryville to come to this school.
I'm sorry that you feel that way, Member Inch.
I thought it was rather nice. I thought it was a good outreach, and I noticed the students, and they are Emory students. They were students that I had before, and when I sent it in my mailbox, I was very, very happy to see some kind of communications between the school and the community.
I would like to thank John for putting this together. I think it's a great start. I share similar comments as Barbara in terms of the- in terms of the content and how we could potentially market this. However, I won't express them in the same way. I will express them in a, I think, hopefully a more productive way, in the sense of unity that this board should, you know, represent and stand for. And I would like to make myself available in any way, shape, or possible to help with whatever expertise I have in marketing-
Yeah.
-to help improve any following communications to our community. But again, I think it's a great start, and thank you for putting this together and showing that initiative.
No, thank you. Thank you. Thank you for the offer. I appreciate it. It was a lot of time and doing my best in the area that isn't necessarily my expertise, so thank you.
Dr. Rubio, I would also like to say I think that this is a great start. I have one, a couple of follow-up questions about how the- is there sort of a procedure or protocol in place for- you mentioned 50 families have contacted you so far.
Yes.
What does it look like in terms of recruiting or procedures once you are contacted by a family?
Our process and system right now involves our new parent outreach coordinator, and so on the website, we've delineated, because we still have a few families who either might come in mid-year or a few that we're honestly chasing down to finish some of the paperwork they needed to do in the beginning of the year. But on the website, under enrollments, parents enter their information, their email, their phone numbers, and they get a follow-up- they get some follow-up information, a welcoming letter, actually that I'll be glad to share with the board, actually, because we just designed this. They get a welcome letter from myself. They get a copy of the three-year community update that went out last fall, and they get the procedures that Ms. Parham and the cabinet team and the staff have helped me develop and clearly spell out for the parents, so they can start their paper process. I don't know if Ms. Parham has seen anyone come in yet, but the- we're happy to have that communication from them, and we try to develop and establish that relationship right away.
And is there any sort of open house or opportunity for these families to visit the school, meet teachers, meet other students and families?
We're working on setting up some tours right now, yeah.
Wonderful.
Yeah, and I'll add that Ms. Miles- and you- did you want to say something? Ms. Miles actually went out to the preschool at the YMCA to represent the district and recruit parents as well.
So every year, we go out, a team of teachers, TK, and kinder teachers go out, and we've been doing this for the last four years. But this year, I already have gone to Ralph Hawley, and we had about 15 parents there, and we gave them information. We gave them information on our website. At the same time, we were also working with ECDC, and we're working on doing a tour and doing a family night, and also Ralph Hawley is also interested in attending. And so I was just talking to Lisa, Ms. Tamari, in reference to that. So we are doing a strong outreach to the ECDC families and to the Ralph Hawley families. Many of those students are already our students because they're already in our program, so it's just a matter of them transferring over to our site. We want to make this a really warm welcoming, so they're able to have an opportunity to look at the school. I've been talking with Veronica at ECDC in order to support that, and we wanted to do that open orientation here. I also spoke with Dr. Rubio and Ms. Tamari in reference to the kind of competition we're getting when I go out to these meetings. So when I did my presentation at Ralph Hawley, Berkeley, Maynard was there, and then the charter school that is a- what did you call it? It's a immersion-
Yeah, language immersion.
-school for- what's the language?
It's a language immersion school. It's an Asian- Chinese or Mandarin, I think.
Yes, Chinese Mandarin. And so it's quite competitive, and they're out doing their outreach now. So we are on top of making sure that we have something that we're working really strongly with for both of our preschools to support that, sending information out, and this was very helpful. I also live in the community, and I got this and my neighbors got it, and there are several students who are in my building and family, and they've been asking me. So there's also word of mouth in reference to teachers that live in the community as well.
Wonderful, thank you. And I would really like to commend you and Dr. Rubio on getting the process started earlier this year, and also would love to be invited or included in any sort of-
And I was going to suggest that because what we said was, at the night when we do the orientation, I've been talking to Wellness, the REC Center, I forget what the director of the REC Center's name is.
Pedro Jimenez.
Pedro, because he spoke with me about ECDC. And so that night of that orientation, hopefully we can have some refreshments and speakers from all areas of our site, so that they'll see our beautiful Wellness Center, they're able to see our REC program, and they're able to visit the classrooms, the A building, and see the things that we have to offer. So that's the thought.
Thank you.
I wanted to, again, make myself available in any way, shape, or form, happy to present, happy to be a tour guide.
Oh, thanks.
Happy to help to sign flyers, happy to help to sign a Facebook campaign, anything that you might need.
Great.
John, we're here to help.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Mr. Davis?
Yeah, all this is triggered before ECL was built on this site, we were having annual block parties here, and Member Collins knows because she was involved in trying to orchestrate that. But now that you have this complex, you have the city here, you have both schools here, I would think that you could combine this effort to contact the community, bring people in, include the students, staff, the city, and I think you could have- I've talked to Ms. Good about it, and once again, have quite an activity going.
That's great, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. I do want to add something to this conversation pertaining to the various factions that are providing to prove points. This is just one component, what you see here as far as this flyer. So I think just what was discussed tonight is germinating ideas, and that's probably what marketing is about, is it's germinating ideas and promoting a holistic approach. So this is only one part of it, so I don't want to get too hung up on it. I don't want to be, is a detriment or a plus, but right now, it's an advertising campaign, and this is one component. I think Member Vargas's volunteering of his efforts, it was wonderful to see that, and any other volunteers, that would be wonderful. And then as far as the ideas, as far as a family night, block party, anything that gets people into this facility and to see the people that are in this environment is what you really want. And that will basically spread better than any paper or email, is you have word of mouth, and that's what you really want to stress. So I want to really make that a point.
Can we do that?
Any, yes, please.
Well, so ASB was thinking about throwing a block party again this year, so we're just kind of thinking between us two whether or not that would be something that we want to do, but it does take a lot of planning, so we would need a lot of support for that.
A lot of planning, and it takes-
Like months.
...money, and it takes a lot of support, but I am more than happy to help, as I have been continuing to do since I was no longer employed here. But I'm back, and I really haven't gone anywhere, but anything that the kids know that they want to do, they always know that they have need to help them. And I also just want to make a statement that moving forward, the school board, we are to be a team that should build each other up and support each other in order to create an atmosphere that we know will be educational for our students and our community. So moving forward, I want to go way back to when I was a little girl, wasn't that long ago, but it was a little bit back. My mama said, "If you don't have anything nice to say, perhaps you shouldn't say anything at all."
Point taken.
I have a question for the student members. How long, you said, I was in ASB myself, I know these things take a long time, but it has been a while. How long in terms of timing do you think the block party would need to plan on?
Well, I mean, depends on when it happens. Before, it would happen around probably April, I think, or June, May?
End of April, beginning of May.
May, okay. So May, but definitely if we would want to have a block party, we would definitely have to start now. We have to coordinate with like local businesses especially, so we have to like reach out to them.
Right.
Okay. All right, well, let's see, maybe we can talk further and see what we can get started.
I think this topic is migrating or moving around, which is good. I mean, it's good, and maybe we can move that to, I mean, possible item would be a future, added future agenda, but I don't want to get into that right now because that's another agenda item. But as it stands now, do we have any further comments or questions from either the board or the public?
I had a minor comment here. My daughter is attending the Science for Girls.
Scientific Adventures for Girls.
Adventures for Girls. She's having a lot of fun. So I'm glad that's going on. Appreciate that.
Great, great new program we have.
Absolutely.
All right. With that, then we have, is it calendar review?
Yes.
I'm kind of lost right now, anyway.
Yes.
Calendar review, sorry about that.
Sure. Our next, our next meeting, and I just have a correction here on the time, and if we can get it done shorter, we'll work on that. But right now, the sketch for our Saturday board retreat this Saturday, and if Ms. Tam- did you send a copy of that? I believe Ms. Tamari had just emailed you at the end of the day today with the draft agenda. But that is this Saturday from 9:00 to 4:15, so it's not to 3:00, I apologize, and we'll endeavor to, if we can get out sooner, we'll certainly endeavor to get out sooner. And the next regular board meeting is March 8th at 6:00 PM. And, oops, no school for students, the week of February 20th. And then we have our city schools meeting. I believe that's probably the first Thursday of the month, which is the typical day that the city and the district try to schedule that. It's a great opportunity for our partnership with the city, and that's on the 2nd of March at 5:30.
Any other board announcements?
I believe there's a gardening event happening on Saturday as well.
You are correct.
Correct.
It is, yeah.
Which coincides with the birthday.
I can just do a quick search here, bear with me.
So we should bring our gloves? Is that what it says?
No, it's the, I don't know. It was an email I received regarding that exact event.
He'll look like a pod faster than I am, so.
It looks like it will begin at 10:00 AM and go until about 4:00 AM.
That's correct, until 4:00, here at the ECL.
Yes.